Depending again on how many staff that we have, we might see some utility savings. But also in addition to that, we know that part of our HVAC system protocol is that we're doing longer runtimes. In fact, maybe up to even 24 hours a day, as well as we're upgrading our filters, which will take more energy than to get that airflow through those filters. So some of those energy savings may not be there because of some of those other components as well. So that's kind of my perspective right now is that we need to dig into that a little bit more in terms of understanding how many staffing are coming in, what is going to be the cleaning protocol with that. And again, I don't think that our expenses will change much as it relates to the staffing in the building from the custodial staff. We may go down to, you know, not having a third shift and moving those people to a second shift. But I do anticipate that those cleaning protocols will continue to require those custodial staff. We may see some savings in some of our contractor. If you remember last spring for our bus contractor, for instance, we had some savings in our bus contractor because we weren't paying fuel and miles on the buses and things. So we still would have to go through that process of negotiation with our contractors. So I don't have any answers on that at this point.
Okay, thank you. I just had one other question, and I guess this is for Kelly, Michael, and Stephen. In the slides presented about the distance learning plus and the hybrid model, you outlined multiple benefits and challenges. One thing that I noticed, and I don't know if this is really a question or how to ask this question, but it seems that the challenges versus benefits are like opposite. You know, when you, or challenge, in the hybrid model, the benefits are what the challenges are of the distance learning model, right? And those are all very student centered. You know, we're talking about how we are interacting with students on a regular basis. And I'm wondering if you can share any possible solutions so that those challenges can be benefits in our distance learning plus model.
So Heather, obviously, great question. But I guess what I would say is that I don't know, right? I'm not a young person, I'm not in school, so I don't know how that was going to benefit. But what I would offer is that this summer at Osseo Senior High School, we had a summer forge program. And essentially what that was, was about 100 of our scholars who did not fare well during this last trimester three in the distance learning model. And what we wanted to do was make sure that the unintentional consequence of COVID was not going to impact their on-time graduation opportunity. So what we did was we staffed differently. We said now each teacher is also has an ESP partnered with them, and they had a morning check-in each and every day. From a social emotional standpoint, what's showing up for you, so on and so forth. So I offer that quick snippet only to say that I think there's the, as you alluded to, the personal elements as far as the hybrid model versus the distance learning model, that there's exemplars within our system as to how to meaningfully connect with our young people. And we've also had opportunities to engage with our families, to learn from them, what's working for them, what's not working for them. And that's where the idea about the backpack comes from. And the fact that our parents need to feel like they're engaged. So how, that's why we wanted to streamline our CSO for elementary and then streamline our Schoology for the secondary to make sure that we're in communication not only with our scholars, but also with our families.
Thank you.
I know Heather, that, um, so one of the, one of the challenges the last time around for distance learning was the no face-to-face interactions with staff or students. So we're already looking at ways. First of all, I think it's important to remember that last time the buildings were closed down by the state. And this time they will not be. So we can bring students in, that we want to have more one-on-one and those face-to-face interactions. So we are talking about maybe our self-contained special ed students and some select EL students, but also others that we might think or feel that they really need to come into the building for some sort of connection or meeting with counselors, administrators, whomever it may be. So it's important to remember the buildings will now, they're not closed like they were in the spring. So we're hoping that those face-to-face interactions are going to not be as large of an issue as they were. Also, the, you know, the social emotional needs. I know that in Michael's area with Kate Emmens, they've already been exploring a lot of ways to be able to provide those services better in a remote way with our students, such as with Lee Carlson Center and other ways. They already are developing online or remote ways to connect with the families. We already, and we have a full-time check-and-connect person that also, you know, works for the McKinney, Vento part, Vento part of our work in the district as well. And so they make connections with the students all the time. I know that a lot of the schools use the SMSs to make connections with the students. So once we were in distance learning last year, we found all sorts of ways to get a lot better at doing that and just being thrown into a brand-new way of doing things and figuring out how to really connect with those students, whether it be FaceTiming, whether it be through Google Meets, whether it be through daily or weekly phone calls to really help meet those social emotional needs. But Kate Emmens has spent a lot of time this summer connecting with a lot of organizations who they know that's going to be in need from any school district. So we already have that planned. And as far as the challenge around the existing beliefs around distance learning, you know, that, that has been our work to try to debunk a lot of the thoughts, myths, some of them, and some of them truths around distance learning last spring and where the gaps were, and to really address those. I know Jeremy and LNA, the backpack that they keep talking about, you really liked the idea last time, you know, the family backpack and those resources. Those weren't things that we had in the spring. So we learned a lot in the spring, and we uncovered a lot of gaps. And that work this whole entire summer has been around filling those, well, that work even starting last spring was around filling those gaps, and that's just continued. So that's how we're trying to specifically address the challenges.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions?
I have some, you're surprised. I want to kind of jump off where Heather and Kelly are talking about parent support. And I heard, I think it was Michael, talk about parent PD. Is that the parent academy idea that we heard about earlier? And so I'm going to throw a bunch of thoughts together in that. With the extra time, would be, be able to help parents be in a better position to help their children and make sure we get all of our families connected with CSO, Schoology, have some of that parent academy business, and be able to give our EL teachers support to work with EL families. I mean, that's enough of that altogether. They're all kind of related.
Yes, no.
Woo, let's go.
So absolutely. I think today I had a great opportunity to visit with some of our community members who are on Facebook and kind of really championing some of our equity work around the community and had the opportunity to meet with about seven of them. And really what came up was how are we communicating with our families? How are we communicating with our families? How are we communicating with our families? And so with that, we know that our work is to be very, very intentional. With the work session, we talked about a family and community engagement coordinator that's coming on board. But more so before that, we know that we've built up our infrastructure of bilingual assistance so that we can be in communication more efficiently. And then beyond that, we have talking points as a app, I guess, to make sure that we can communicate more readily with our families as well. So those are some of the pieces that we're taking kind of intentional steps. And we want to make sure with the CSO that there's access, that it's translated, and it's a streamlined platform rather than jumping on ParentVee or jumping on Schoology or jumping on CSO's to really streamline what platform we're using so then we can be intentional about what that communication looks like to our families, and they know how they can support and come alongside. Because I've never met a family member that doesn't want their scholar to be successful. So we want to make sure that we partner with them to achieve the outcome.
Fantastic.
Ed, I asked Rob Nelson to come in and kind of share a little bit about his thoughts, you know, in terms of the parent academies and what he's thinking through, and also talk a little bit about the CSO, because he was part of that group that was really recommending that. Rob?
Yeah, I was just going to add one thing. I asked Steve if we could remind everybody that another, you know, hand in hand and connected interconnected with Michael's work leading our family and community engagement is that that's an expectation for all the principals as well. It's part of their evaluation process. And one of the, you know, through every cloud, there's a bright light, right? So one of the bright lights last year in the whole distance learning was we had more family and community engagement than we have in a long time. And in fact, it's, some schools have asked, could they even maybe do parent-teacher conferences, one set of them differently this time? Because they found when they did them through a Google Meets, which they were forced to last spring, they had in some of our sites a lot more family involvement and family engagement, and they heard really good feedback from families around that. So some was just a natural learning as well of how to engage families. Or even in some of our organizations, we found that we had way better attendance from families if they were just tired and stuff, but could, could log onto a Google Meets meeting and be involved versus having to come. So lots of ways to engage families that we learned about.
And Rob has a great one, his parent academy.
Okay, a couple of different questions. First, we've shared with our staff as early as last spring that we were going to be shifting towards CSO as a K5 platform. So that's given our staff some time. We did some professional development in our building as early as early May about that. Jeremy Will and his team have done an amazing job of putting together some PD for our staff that they can utilize on a self-paced basis. Giving them some additional time to be able to do that would be beneficial. I do know that one concept that we're looking at is when families come to meet the teachers, we're looking at a concept of spacing that out around the building grounds, having parents pull up in a car, and then having assigned areas and they can come up and join and meet their teacher outside in a more natural environment. That extra week would allow us to do some lesson planning and preparation, give them some materials along with their device itself. So we can give them cheat sheets that they can go home with already knowing, okay, here's how we have to move forward. And then we're also exploring doing a variety of parent academies, and we would likely assign it by As and Bs. And so we would utilize the gymnasium, utilize the cafeteria, so we have more than enough distance. Call families in by A group or B group, go through expectations, literally show them this is what happens when you get an assignment on your device through CSO, watch what happens, so they know exactly how to go through that. They know the expectations of what a day might look like. So we're exploring lots of different opportunities at our site. I know many of the other elementary principals are doing so as well.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. You have another one?
I don't know if this is the place.
I thought you were asking, sorry. It's getting late.
Yeah, and this is important.
Oh, no, no, I forgot who was, I was asking, don't worry.
No, it's all good, it's all good. So I don't know if this is the time for it or after your recommendation, Corey, but I just want to say that I taught a summer school class online, and we only had four weeks and two hours a day for four days. And the amount of relationship building that happened with having that synchronous learning is pretty amazing. And I think we underestimate the ability of teachers and students to be able to build that relationship online. Thing I'm concerned about is being able to build a relationship, and I'm speaking for myself right now as a teacher, with a bunch of students while I'm trying to teach them behavior expectations in a building that they've never had to have in that kind of a building. And so to me, the gift of having distance learning makes a lot of sense so that I can concentrate on that relationship through one modality and not have to continually tell my students, and I admit I'm teaching younger students, don't touch your mask, don't take your mask off, six feet away. Go da-da-da, da-da-da-da, da-da-da. Because it takes a long time and it, and no matter how positive you are as a teacher, it gets tiring reminding kids to follow the rules. So that's just one piece I wanted to add. I'll be done.
All right, thank you. No, I was looking at Heather, I thought she was asking the question, that's why I was confused.
It's all good.
Like I said, it's getting late and I'm losing it. So, okay, so next up, I guess, is if there's no more questions. Corey, you were going to make, continue with the presentation or recommendations?
Heather teed it up so nicely for me.
All right.
That was great. And I appreciate you asking, and I wanted to make sure we had it timed out right. First, I just want to say thank you to our team and so, so many others. If you think about the number of hours we spent the last three or four meetings really unpacking all this to try to, try to figure out what the best thing to do is, it's clear how challenging it is, and there's no perfect solution to the situation because it's so fluid and so uncertain. But I do know in talking with time passing and getting deeper into this, as I talk with our school and building leaders and talking in partnership with DMO and our teachers and with Becky and our ESPs, it's clear that when I add up their desire and you add up the recommendations or guidance from the county, the health department, MDE, our district leaders, our building leaders, our teachers, the cumulative recommendation is to please give us the chance to start a week later and give us a chance to start in distance, distance learning because it's the, it's the best of the choices we have right now because the confidence of being able to start in a hybrid model on September 14th is very low. It's challenging. We're, you've heard a lot about why that is. So if you go to, here's, here's where I am, my recommendation for moving forward is, if you go like the next two, one more. So start the year on September 14th. That gives us the staffing, if you go forward, one more. There you go. Starting on the 14th gives, if you heard Anthony and Laurel talk about the space and time to finalize the assignments and all the moving parts with staffing. And we start instruction and distance learning on the 14th, and we go for four weeks till October 14th. And then at that point, we have the intention, our goal always is to get our students back in. I share that with Kelly, you said that earlier. We all want that, our staff desire it more than you know. The goal would be to start our hybrid model on the 19th, so that'd be after the weekend of EBA. And that gives us a month to continue to develop and prepare our staffing, our instructional model, and not forget, safety first. We have high rates of COVID in half of our district. So we have to continually monitor that and see which direction that goes. And then come back to you on the 29th. Our next board meeting is September 29th with any new information we have and are we able to move forward into that hybrid model on the 19th of October, which would give some space and time for families and staff to make those adjustments. So that is kind of in a, if you go to the, yes, thank you, you're ahead of me. So that would be our recommendation right now is to go start the year in distance learning till the 14th, being able to come back on the 19th in hybrid. But on the 29th, give you an update on what do we know then versus what we know today in moving forward. And there's some sort of additional comments I just want to make around how we can kind of move forward with this. And I just, I think you see it and you hear it, this has consumed all of us. As much as Kelly likes talking to me on the phone every day, I'm not sure that's exactly how he wants to do this. It's on the hearts and minds of all of our staff. And we know it's on the hearts and minds of all of our parents. And my own three daughters are begging to go back to school. It breaks my heart every day because I want, I want that for them. But I keep coming back to, how do we do this in a safe way and in a planful way? And I, I just believe that for me, this recommendation is again, based on all those things I mentioned earlier, the consultation with the state agencies and the county, consultation with Kelly and the teachers, our district leaders, our, our building leaders. And whatever we do, we got to be able to do it well. And I'm not believing that we can start on the 14th in the way we need to deliver a hybrid model and do it well with so many of the variables that you heard tonight. And that is kind of where I find myself, I don't like it, it's not what I want. I think I've talked to each one of you about this, this is not where we want to be to start the year. And every school district's wrestling with it in such a challenging fashion, right? And what, what is our readiness? What is our preparedness along with what's the safety risk and factors that are out there? And I know that's debatable, but I'm, I'm going to err on the side of trusting the health professionals because I'm, that's not, it's not why you hired me to be in this job. And so I'm going to trust that their guidance and also in relationship with our staff. Because in the end, whatever plan we pick only works if our staff can deliver on that plan and be comfortable and planful and trained and confident in what they're asked to do in front of our students and with, in partnership with our, our families. So we'll do all those things, and I think we're kind of at the end here. Were, you know, any additional questions we might be able to tackle? I thought I heard something about childcare and maybe, there were some other things, I think, outside the scope of, of today or the presentation tonight. So if I bring it back to its, for me, it's elements of safety, staff preparedness and instructional preparedness and being able to, to really increase those efforts for the next month. And with the intention and hopes that we can now begin to bring students back in right after EBA weekend. So with that, Gerald Staffey, I'll turn it back to you. Any additional questions or any other areas we didn't get to touch on that I think some of you may have?
No, I'll start the questions, Director Simons, if you wanted to start with those.
I don't have questions. I have perspective, I don't know if I should wait for the discussion time of our motion. Is it?
Okay.
Question, not comments, right?
What's that, yeah, questions?
No questions.
Okay, Director Dawson, what, any questions?
No questions.
Director Moskita-Jones?
My question was childcare, do we, are we offering? If we go distance learning to start, are we offering childcare for anybody who wants it? Do we have scholarships, sliding fees, skills, anything like that? And then will there be people there to help them with their distance learning?
So I'm going to let Brian answer that, and I bet he's walking down the hall right now. But if there's another question while we're waiting for him to.
I do have one more question. So on October 19th, under your recommendation, would we gradually bring kids in or boom, 7,500 kids on October 19th?
My recommendation would be we start in the AB model that we've been planning. Unless, you know, in a month when I come back to you, we, we have new information that says that's not viable, but right now that's the target.
So half of the kids in each building?
Yep, 50%, yep, that's the model we've been working on. All right, Brian's here, can, I don't know if Brian, you heard the question?
I do have.
Okay. So I'll let Director Moskita-Jones repeat it.
I'm wondering, under distance learning plus, are we offering childcare for everyone? Are there scholarships, sliding fee, et cetera? And will there be people there to help them with their distance learning time?
Yep, we'll be offering childcare in any of the models. So no matter what model we're in, we'll, we'll be offering care. And we've been working with DL, sorry, I ran down here. We worked with, we're working with our instructional team on how we might provide support. You know, one of the things I, I would say that did happen in the spring was there were a lot of folks that assumed that we'd be able to provide essentially one-on-one tutoring, and that's just not the case. We're there providing childcare. But we did things like create learning stations. We helped train our staff on all the various logins. We utilized the computer labs. So we were able to add some support for their learning, and we'll continue to do that. But the primary goal is childcare. And we will offer it, we will offer some scholarships. We do have some dollars through the CARES Act to help with care for essential tier-one workers.
So, but at least if, if I'm a childcare provider in a room with whatever, 15 kids, would I, I mean, it's the learning day. Would I be making sure that they got logged on and things like that? Not necessarily instruct, but make sure that they're doing what they're supposed to be doing during the school day?
Yep, we, we help them get logged on, you know. Ultimately, they're responsible for following the learning instructions that their teacher gave them. But yes, we provide them the assistance. There was a lot of assistance needed just for the technical side of things, right? How do I use my device? You know, I forgot my login and stuff, so we helped with that.
Okay, sounds good.
Good?
Can you give an update on pre-K also while you're up here?
Sure, I can try. So we, we've opened up our, we still have some openings in VPK. So this week we opened up, we're calling folks that are on our waiting list to get into VPK. So those numbers are still filling in. We're going to be running our four-star program at the sites originally planned. We have had some families remove their registration. So we're, we might be at one less site, but that's not determined yet because we haven't even opened up registration for childcare yet. So we'll be doing that on 9:00 AM on Thursday. And we're ready to go in whatever model the board's ready to move forward on as well.
So VPK will follow the K12 model? And ECFE is doing their own kind of a?
Yeah.
Thing?
Yeah, we have, we already have folks registered for various ECFE classes. We did some pivoting this spring where we offer some online options for families that they actually took advantage of. A number of families took advantage of some nature classes, so doing some stuff with parents and kids and teachers from ECFE outside. Numbers are a little lower than they normally would be in the fall right now for ECFE.
Are we losing staff?
We will staff according to how many people are registered in community education.
And so if some staff need to be let go, would they be able to be subs in the buildings?
I don't, I don't have the answer to that question.
Okay.
So Brian, we mentioned that we would offer childcare, which is, would be allowing students into the classrooms and having to follow COVID protocols for cleaning, and teachers would have to do that. If teachers can't, if we need more time for that, for teachers to learn to do it with their regular students, how can we then enable it with our, you know, the childcare students assuming that they have to come in the very first day? So I'm not sure how there's a difference there. And one is being used to say we can't come back, and another one's saying we'll offer it if we don't come back. So how does that?
Yeah, my short answer to that, Mike, is that our childcare staff have been doing these protocols since March 17th, face-to-face. So we, these staff have been working directly with students at schools since the 17th of March, including all summer. So they're well-versed in all the COVID protocols already.
Would there be a need for an increased amount of staff, new staff to do this and train?
Yeah, one, I think that's, I like how you asked that question. So one of the things I think that will look different is if we're in a hybrid model, we'll likely need to train some staff who wouldn't normally work in the childcare setting to be in that setting because we might need to utilize some staff in a different way. Like for instance, maybe some ESPs. Because typically our staff in childcare would only be working before and after school because there wouldn't be that middle day portion of the day that we'd be providing care. So we may need some additional staffing support during the day. But in general, all of our program managers and childcare staff have been doing, following the COVID-19 protocols for these last five months. the COVID-19 protocols for these last five months.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, may I ask a follow-up question to your question?
Sure.
What is the likelihood or potential that we'll have students in an elementary school setting, if we're in a hybrid model, that all the students will still be at school every day because half are in the childcare setting and half are in the classroom setting?
Yeah, well, that, that would certainly be true of students who, or families who take advantage of full-day childcare on their non-face-to-face instructional day.
So I guess...
That's accurate.
What I'm wondering about is, number one, is how do we follow the protocols in that scenario?
Yeah.
And number two, it sounds to me like we're, if that were to happen, we're swapping education for a paid program. Does that make sense?
Well, for...
Like if I'm the parent and my child's attending the A days...
Yeah.
But I need childcare, so they're still there on the other days. Now I have to pay for them to be there, and they're still in the building five days a week. And if everybody does that, or a lot of people do that, then we still have a high number of students in a building.
Yeah, and we did a little surveying to try to get an idea of who might access childcare this fall. It's been very hard for parents to make a commitment until they know what model we're in, you know, so that would be my first statement. And then I think the next thing I would say is we'll know pretty quickly, obviously, what our numbers are when we open up this little five-to-seven-day registration window starting this week. So far, in these last five months, our childcare numbers are down significantly, right? So this summer, for instance, we typically have 1,300 students enrolled in summer kid stuff. We had 400 enrolled this summer, right? So I don't anticipate, and during the spring, we only had 150 folks sign up for childcare through the tier-one essential workers, right? Now this, now it's more expansive because anyone can sign up for it.
Right.
So it's hard to say if summer's gonna be a perfect predictor for the fall, but we'll know pretty shortly, and that would tell you, Heather, kind of to your question, well, how many students are really accessing childcare or at the school for five days a week? Yeah, good point.
Thank you.
And I have a question for you, Corey. So it comes up on September 29th. What numbers are you going to use to make the recommendation? Since we have differences across the district, and quite frankly, that's in confirmed numbers. We have no idea if there's a difference in testing that would say, maybe Maple Grove has even more cases, but it's tested a lower rate. Or maybe that, you know, they're the same, but one is testing at a substantially higher rate. We have no confidence in that number because we don't know what the testing rate is. So what are we gonna do to find that out? And then how are we going to make a fair assessment across the district and compared to the county numbers? And I can understand why the county wanted to use the county numbers because it's a big number, and any differences across the county in testing rates gets buried. But we could be two to three to four times testing in Maple Grove and Brooklyn Park and Brooklyn Center than what the county test rate is. So the 23 in the county may mean nothing if we're testing four times as much in our area, and those numbers, again, there could be more, but it's an arbitrary number with an, without looking at the rate to baseline it. I mean, that's simple statistics. So how can we figure that out and come up with a valid comparison across the district and to across the county? Because right now, there's no valid comparison.
So I think the level of confidence in the county varies. You might not have it, others may. I had a struggle with that question because I was advised by the county that there's concern for under-reporting, not over-testing. So again, it's a multiple-pronged decision. I don't have a criteria number right now because we look at county data, we look at local data, and it's in consultation with the health experts. So I'm looking at the process more than a set criteria if it's over or below or above a number. You know, when this model first came out and we looked at 35 or 37, we might think, well, that means our high school students are in distance and our elementary students are in hybrid. As it's played out over the last month, and then we talk to epidemiologists now, they're really concerned about that. There's a high level of concern for how high those rates are. So will we learn more between now and then? Probably is my guess. We're gonna just have a whole lot more experience with what's happening around the state, especially with districts that do open and have students in the buildings. Will that be a factor as well? So I've not, I don't have a number in mind. I have a process in mind as far as listening to the health experts, listening to our staff, listening to our readiness level, and how far along we can move with those critical key indicators that we tried to cover tonight as far as, does that prepare us to do this well? And that's, I guess, the, that's the challenge of this whole thing, right? So I don't know over the next month if the county and health professionals will dial this in and have a more of an accurate way of representing the case rate data. I'm not gonna try to do their job for them. I have to lean on them, and same with the Department of Education, and that, they're the experts, they're the ones doing the science. So that's kind of where my head's at with how to do this decision-making protocol. Then we bring it back, and how does it work for us in A C E O, right? What's our strengths, what are our weaknesses, what are our limitations, and what, what's our confidence? And I'm right now really listening to our leaders and our staff and their ability to deliver on bringing students back in.
So if we can, on September 29th, we come back, and whatever the numbers are, and we've figured out some process, what happens if our leadership, our managers, for somehow haven't been able to work out all the problems that have been identified tonight? How do we address that? What's gonna happen if we somehow fail at getting ready in that four-week period or six weeks from today?
I don't see it as failure. I see it, like I said, people have worked around the clocks since March on this, and it's still that hard, right? So I could fall back on the model. I showed on the screen, we have those four levels, and we're gonna have to assess what level are we most ready for? And that's my job to kind of figure out organizationally what can we do and do it effectively and do it well without it being, you know, crashing and burning, right? So it's, it really is, this first step is giving us the best chance to start the year because we have to launch the school year. We gotta get going and get ready and do the best model we can knowing what we have in front of us. You've all heard the last few meetings how complicated all this planning is and how hard it is to get it there, and you also saw the desire to get it right. And we all want the same thing, we all want our students back in school. That's what we hope for. I hope the trend goes this way, and the trend data says it's time, let's bring them back. And our staff are safe, our kids are ready to learn, and we're closer to what we want from a quality instructional experience. But I'm also, in my mind, thinking we're, we'll make that decision then on that information that's available. It's hard to project, other than I wanna set some targets for us that we aspire to, that we are gonna try to hit and collect that information between now and then, and then come back to you with, here's what we know now at the end of September.
If, using the same numbers we have today, if Brooklyn Center is below 40, in the 30s, which indicate hybrid, are you comfortable, are you gonna make that recommendation to go hybrid? No matter if it's still higher than others, it may be higher than Brooklyn Park or Plymouth or Maple Grove or Dayton or wherever, are you still gonna make that recommendation if it falls in the governor's range for the countywide data?
I won't tell you today what I think I'll decide in a month, but what I will tell you is, I'll listen to what the health experts tell me and what they've learned over the last month. I'll learn, I'll listen to what our system has been able to do over the last month and our readiness to deliver instruction and keep people safe, and put all that together and look at multiple factors and then give you a recommendation then. But I don't know if it's fair for me to say what I think I'll say in a month when I don't know that information right now.
I'm just concerned we're gonna chase a number that goes lower and lower and lower in that...
That's the whole challenge of this whole thing, isn't it? It's not that simple. But my hope is that we're, we're at a point where we can start bringing students back in. We're already trying to do it now with distance learning plus, we're gonna do distance and still try to find a way to get some intervention going.
Okay, any other questions for superintendent? Right now, we can actually skip voting on this until the next item, but the next item is the consent agenda. Board members, are there any items that you would like to remove for separate consideration? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as printed?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Everyone does have that in front of you. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we will take a vote, all in favor of passing the consent agenda as printed, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes five-nothing. So our first action item, and agenda item number 10, is the superintendent's recommendation of opening schools in fall 2020. Do you want to say anything else, or is that...
Mr. Chair, I would like to recommend that we divide the motion because there's multiple parts to the recommendation, and I would like to divide the motion into two parts, to a motion related to the changing the start date of the school year as one motion, and a second motion regarding changing the school model from distance, from hybrid to distance learning for that period of time as noted in the recommendation.
Okay. Is that your motion?
So, so, okay, so I guess, so I, I move to accept the recommendation of the superintendent to change our start date of the school year to Monday, September 14th.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion regarding changing the start date to the 14th per the superintendent's Hearing no discussion, all in favor of approving the motion to move the start date...
So, and so we don't, so what happens?
Okay, no, go ahead.
Well, I'm not really voting on this because why I wanna have a discussion, that's where we're at right now?
No, actually, we passed the discussion, but you have a point of order, what point of order is that?
So when Director Simons brings forth the motion to amend the original action item, how, remind me how that works again? So then we don't vote on the original piece, it just takes out the...
The, the item that would be voted on would be actually to split this. It's tantamount to a motion to amend, so you're not voting on the one issue, you're voting on the motion that's been presented by Director Simons.
Okay, so I think everyone needs to be clear on that. So we didn't make any motions until I made a motion to regarding the first part of it. So there wasn't a motion to amend, it's just an action item on our agenda as one piece.
So doesn't that go to the end of the agenda when you bring forth a new action item?
It's not a new action item. Okay, well, we can make the motion to recommend it, and then I'll move to divide it.
Sure, I would interpret the item, the action item on, the matter before the board, the main motion is determined by the agenda that's set before the board. So does that make sense? We would, the motion then would be to divide the, divide the motion or amend it in this sense.
Okay, so then we have to start over, because that's not what I motioned. So I motioned to divide the, the, the motion to approve the recommendation into two parts, being one, approval of the start date, and second, approval of the model.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes. So I don't know what the, the recommendation was brought to us together, so what does that...
The motion is to split it?
I understand that.
So that we can vote on it separately?
Yeah, I understand that part of it.
Okay.
But does it, did it change the intent of what the recommendation by our administration and superintendent?
There were, to be clear, there were two recommendations. Move the start date and start in distance learning. Those are two separate things. Move the start date, start in distance learning. So that is what the splitting of the motion will allow us to vote on each separately. And that's what, that's what we'll do. We have, we have a motion to do that, and we have a second, and we're discussing to vote on whether to vote on it split, because there's two separate items. And I think that's what Director Simons is getting at.
So I think during the discussion, board members can make comments as to whether they feel comfortable or not with that.
Well, I think what I don't feel comfortable with is that we were all holding our discussion for our, of how we're receiving this recommendation, and it wasn't split. So it's hard for, it's hard to, it's a little disingenuous to then split something without having a full discussion about the entirety of the, of the recommendation, because now this way, you know, my comments are about the entirety of the recommendation because they really go hand in hand. So this, to me, changes kind of, not kind of, it changes the intent of what was brought forth.
So I would say that this allows us to be able to still change the start date because we certainly need that time and...
But you're changing the start date because you're also, there's also then a part of that, as we heard very clearly, extra time to prepare.
For any, for any model, that it's time for any model. That's what I was hearing, because we need time.
Point of order. I think we were going back and forth instead of having discussion.
Yep. So is there...
So first time right now is to discuss whether or not we agree with splitting or not splitting, and then we're gonna vote on that, and then we can discuss...
Each item, correct.
So I just explained why I don't agree on splitting them.
Okay.
There we go.
Director Muscata-Jones? Any, anyone with another comment?
I support splitting. I believe that there, there are issues that we can talk about separately.
Okay.
I, I don't see a need to split our, we very clearly in the past said that we trust Superintendent McIntyre and his administration on recommendations, and this is one whole recommendation that now I believe we're looking at trying to make it different than what his recommendation is, and I'm not, I'm not okay with that.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor of splitting into two action items to vote on them separately, the starting, the moving the start date for additional time to prepare, and the changing of the opening model? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes three to two. We will now entertain motion for the first item, which is, is there a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation to move the start date, start date back to September 14th for additional time? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the proposal to move back the time for additional prep time for our teachers?
Mr. Chair, if I may, I support the moving the start date back by one week. I would also share that I would also support moving the start date back by one more week.
Okay, the proposal is to move it back to the 14th.
Yes.
So that's, that's the motion.
Correct.
So we have, okay, is... So we have, okay, is there, so a motion and a second, correct? So is there any, any other discussion?
So I think this is just a no brainer, other districts are doing this across the state and around us. I think we need more time, dedicated time, we're, we're not bringing students back at that time. Just, this is an obvious choice to me.
Right.
This is not, I mean, I guess I have to say, I'm just really, this is not the way that I believe. This is not very transparent, it feels very tricky and I, I really feel convicted that, I mean, we were presented a whole entire recommendation that a lot of work was put into. And yet, we're picking it apart, I guess I'd say. And so it's very, as a board member, I am very concerned of splitting this recommendation and this motion in this way. And it really, it really speaks to the integrity here, so.
Right now, right now, we're discussing whether to start on the 14th.
It speaks to the integrity of the process, so.
Yes, right?
Yes, point of order, Director Dawson-Wilton is not addressing the discussion but rather.
I said it, the integrity of the process, what's wrong with that?
The process is, right now, we have a motion and a second to approve allowing more time for our teachers to prepare and start on the 14th. Do we have any other discussion regarding that? I fully support it. All in favor, any other discussion? All in favor of moving the start date of the school district back to September 14th and using that time for teachers to prepare, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. The next, I would entertain a motion to start, I'm sorry, yes, to change the starting model from our original approval of hybrid to a model of distance learning up until October 14th with a decision point of September 29th board meeting. Is, is there a motion to do that?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I second, and I want to clarify that we are changing to distance learning plus, allowing people to come in, which is also a hybrid model.
Okay, distance learning plus, to be clear, we have changed the name. So the motion, do we have to change that motion or are we just clarifying it because it's distance learning plus?
It's, it's the recommendation of the superintendent, it's just.
Okay, so the recommendation of the superintendent is distance learning plus. And we, a motion is to approve that through October 14th with the decision point of September 29th. Is that? And again, that's what was motioned and you clarified, you seconded it, and now is there any discussion?
Yeah, oh, sorry.
You can go first.
Yeah, we'll just come down the line, Director Dawson-Wilton?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's very clear, I mean, we all want to be in school. You know, nobody is saying that they don't want to be in school. But I can't, I mean, regardless of the points around testing, there's going to be more testing. The governors came out and more saliva test, I mean, there's going to be more testing, it's going to ramp up. And, you know, we're not necessarily, you know, we watch that, but it's not just the numbers. It's the, it is the entirety of a quality education that meets the mission of this district. And, you know, while I personally, in my own family, I would say we're a house divided. I have a high school daughter who would do anything to be back in school. I have a third grader who is, she just doesn't even care, honestly, you know, she's fine with being at home. So, but I just take very, very seriously our readiness and I take very, very seriously the safety and the ability to ensure that, the goal would be that we take this time so that when we do go back, we can go back. Because the worst thing to me would be to start out in a two day a week and then have to shut down, run away. And you talk about inconsistency in lives, you know, or having to, you know, having a child quarantined or a class quarantined or a teacher quarantined in and out, in and out of the school until we're in, we are fully confident that we have the safety protocols in place, okay? That we have our teachers and our ESPs and the academic integrity in place to be able to execute our system, our education system and to ensure that we have, we are wrapping our arms around our community right now. And so I just, you know, I supported, you know, when we voted last time in the hybrid model because that seemed that that was the direction we're going and we were leading up to that. And I, I think it takes a lot as a leader to, to recognize that maybe we're not ready right now to go back. Because the safety is a priority. And I've, I've been watching board meetings throughout the last couple of weeks, I've seen this shift happen. And, I mean, I really, I would hate to be in a position that we would force a model that is, we're clearly has articulated tonight that there needs to be some more time to really flesh out. And so with that, I fully support the recommendation to start or to look to October potentially 19th.
Okay, thank you, Director Simons?
Yeah, I mean, this is a really tough decision as Superintendent McIntyre illustrated and hearing from everybody. My concern is that we've spent a lot of time talking about ourselves and the district and I really didn't hear a lot of time talking about the needs of our family and our students. And we have 64 to 86% of our students across our district asking or opting in, and I understand that today might look different from the point that they opt in, to hybrid, to have access to in-person instruction. And I hear that we're not, we're not comfortable entirely with our instructional readiness, but the questions I asked in terms of what this time buys us was not compelling or convincing to me that it's, it's going to be significantly different under the two options. And so to me, I have to be responsive to our families' needs and those families who have asked and said that this is in the best interest of their students, I just have to. To me, it's also not that more time is needed, but the duration of the time all the way until October, that's concerning to me and that would put us well behind our benchmark districts in where we're starting. I, so I guess I just, I think we could use more time, but that's, that I didn't hear compelling rationale for that amount of time to make a significant difference instructionally for the two models. Also, there's been a lot of conversation about my city of Brooklyn Park and safety. And living in Brooklyn Park and seeing institutions serving Brooklyn Park, I'm not seeing the Department of Public Health change how we serve our community and other institutions. So to me, I feel a lot of concern about our educational system serving my city differently. So, and so keep this in mind of what this, in the space of just Brooklyn Park, because there's been conversation with that safety and those students and how they're impacted. If you were a student in Brooklyn Park and you're in Anoka-Hennepin, you'll be going back to hybrid on September 14th, to my knowledge of their board meeting. Correct me if I'm wrong.
September 28th.
Oh, sorry, September 28th, for elementary, so it's a little bit more time. If you're a student in Brooklyn Park as of now, if you go to the Noble Academy Charter School, which serves our Mung students, you'll have access to hybrid. If you go to Sage Charter School, that's distance, if you go to Excel, Distance Athlos Hybrid, Nasha-Shaka Charter School, which caters to Russian families, hybrid, New Millennium Hybrid, Prairie Seed Hybrid, and then Progeny Distance Learning are some of the options. And so I just have a hard time understanding why a student in Brooklyn Park would have access to in-person instruction in those other places. But if they're a student in Brooklyn Park attending Oseo, they would not. So I just, because there's, again, specifically because we've talked about the city there and those students, that's why I feel compelled to point that out. So I, like I said, I really understand the need for time and options, but I can't support all the way until October.
All right, thank you, Director Simons, Director Muscata Jones?
Yeah, so I want to talk about the students and families right now. One, 24% of our families chose, or 20, whatever the percentage is, 5,000 families, families with 5,000 of our students opted into DLA. No one opted into hybrid, that is the default. So if we are talking about what our families want at this moment in time, we have no data, zero. We have data from the spring, but we have no data right now. It is an illusion of choice. We have families that can't make that choice because of their situations or because they're, they have no options. And I have a letter that was sent to us by email, I believe today, from a student's sibling who attends Park Center. So she sent this to a teacher who sent it to us. "My younger brother is going to be a senior at Park Center this year and we both spent some time last week looking through what DLA is and what the new schedule would be. He's currently not enrolled in DLA because we learned that advanced classes, like some of the IB classes he's taking now, may not be available. This worries him because he is currently going through the college application process. He wants to best set up his classes so he can confidently start college at those larger universities, but as of right now, he's floating in a pool of doubt. He also simply wants to spend his last year of high school with the teachers he's already familiar with. Being a black boy in the public education system has been hard for him since pre-K, from getting yelled at for things he didn't do, being falsely accused, and teachers administrators being impatient with him. He is afraid that DLA would mean he may get a teacher that's not familiar with students similar to our background or a teacher that may not know his learning style the way his teachers last year did. But a worry he and my family share is him going to school, even with the hybrid model, for the exact reason you listed in the last bullet in your email to the board. 1,000 students in a building is a lot of students." This was the bullet, the bullet point was the bullet point that the teacher did, not me. "My brother has a job where he's an essential worker and so do both of our parents, we're essentially factory workers. Knowing that our family has to leave home every day for work, we know other families do the same, so how is having 1,000 students in a building going to be safe? It seems to me as if the district is making families choose between an unsafe environment where students may be in class a little more similar to pre-COVID and being in a safer environment at home but receiving a not well thought out online education plan. This is not fair at all, the resources students get throughout the district is going to be incredibly disproportionate, more than it already is. I don't know if the district has thought about this. Not only do I think DLA is not a good idea in general, but is not a plan that can be applied district-wide without being unfair to students. The four high schools in the district have very vast differences in student demographics. What is going to happen to the students at the Oseo Learning Center, a school distinctly set up to provide alternative learning programs for students who need specific learning environments in order to succeed? How will students in a DLA class interact with each other and will there be students from multiple schools in one class? And if BIPOC are more likely to choose distance learning, how much wider will the achievement gap be when the district does not yet have a robust distance learning program?" I'm simply reading the email. "When I was at Park Center, I frequently visited the ESC because I was part of a district-wide committee that talked about ways to lessen the achievement gap. And now it seems like the district is shredding that work. Whenever it is safe to go back to school like normal, how will students who are more poorly educated serve, recover, and get up to speed with the students who went to school in person and or already had the resources they need to have a successful academic year? The lack of the communication from the district is also concerning. School starts in three weeks and I and many other people understand that there have been rapid changes to daily life as researchers, the country, and the world learns more about the virus. It's good that the district has different options to how school will be held, but they have to all be good, make sense, and be able to fully support all students and staff. I just had another thought. Protesters are still happening, people are still mourning, black people are missing and being killed, communities are devastated and conversations are being held. How is the district school going to navigate that? The news does not seem to be portraying this nearly enough as much as they did early in the summer, but my social media feeds are filled with videos and pictures as people are continuing to fight for racial justice. Is there going to be a conversation with students about this, especially students who have been affected? And thank you, Michael Lehan, for saying that we will. Thinking back to when I was in 11th grade and, and Trump got elected, I felt comfortable talking to most staff at Park Center about racism, most likely because Park Center has a racially diverse student population. But if students are struggling to conceptualize the race of society and are part of DLA, they may not be comfortable bringing their concerns to teachers they are not all familiar with and would be left confused." And again, that is directly read from this letter to the teacher. And what I am seeing from that is that they felt like they didn't have a choice. I also attended the Coalition for Asian American Leadership's meeting virtually and our Mung population pretty loudly spoke to me that they are concerned about in-person learning at this time and they are also concerned about having a robust distance learning experience. If we start in the recommended model, then we will have a time to have a robust distance learning experience. It will be too difficult for teachers to figure out how to teach hybrid with only four extra days to work. It is, modality is important to teaching, it's an integral part of teaching, especially in elementary. And I cannot understand why we wouldn't trust the health experts, our teachers, our students who can, who are not going to have the experience that we think that they're going to have to be able to figure out new ways of learning together. And I'm, I'm I'm really disappointed that we're even discussing not accepting the recommendation by the leader that we chose who has been every single day for hours and hours and hours spending time with health experts. Because I am not an epidemiologist, none of us here are, and I, I don't know what, what, do we not care about our, our Black and Brown?
Okay, yes, we're now, we're not discussing this, we're going off and challenging us, so any other comments?
Challenging us, I don't know what that means.
Making personal accusations.
Who did?
I did not make a personal action.
Who, who did?
I did not make.
Discussing the resolution versus, or discussing the motion versus calling intentions or beliefs of board members.
I did not speak about any individual board member, I was talking the collective way.
Which it also is a point of order, it's not discussion.
Thank you, Director Douglas.
Thank you, Director Ossafi, or Chair Ossafi, I'm sorry. First of all, I would like to acknowledge the hard work that went into this and the very robust conversation that we've had tonight and leading up to this. I know that this is, this is a really challenging decision for, for me and several of my colleagues have expressed the same. And I know that it is for many of our staff members, cabinet members, and Superintendent McWire as well. Or, I'm sorry, now I did it. Or, I'm sorry, now I did it. Magentaire, I'm sorry. I want to specifically call out that, as a board member, it is my responsibility and it is my duty to vote in my best conscious, consciousness. And I need to, um, take all the information, evaluate it, and make a determination. And some of the information that I get is not shared in these meetings. Some of it's from community members. Some of it's from teachers who contact me privately. And all of these different pieces of information that I receive impact how I vote. And the pieces of information that I don't get impact how I vote. And none of those things are a reflection of whether or not I trust this administration. None. I have confidence that the recommendations provided to us are what our superintendent deems best for our district. But the information that he and I receive might be different. And so sometimes I will not vote in support of his recommendations. And sometimes I will. We've asked a lot of hard questions, and we have gotten a lot of, um, pieces of information. One thing that I feel like has been missing for me is specifically around our students. We talk a lot about safety, and there's a lot of different, uh, opinions about what safety means. And I think the majority of the conversation today has been about safety from the COVID virus. But we're not talking about safety from abuse, neglect, lack of education. And what I mean by that is not that we're not trying, not that our teachers aren't trying, but some of our students are going to be in situations where they're left to learn on their own. I'm concerned that the governor's recommendation was very clear that we use the county case rate data only. And now we're hearing verbally only that we should also be considering city case rate data. And I'm having a really hard time reconciling this information. I think that we could use a little bit more time. I think as a district, if we had a little bit more time, we could open comfortably in a hybrid model. I also think that students need to be in classrooms. I think that that is absolutely the best thing, and I know that so many teachers feel that way. And I also know that so many teachers are afraid to come back to school in an in-class model. And I am considering that as I make this decision. I, I'm, I'm honestly really struggling. I don't know what the best situ, what the best choice is. I feel like we're in a, a position of choosing from two rotten apples. I guess that's all I have right now.
Yeah, thank you. You know, I, I've shared my concerns in the conversations I've had with the superintendent, and he's shared his, absolute love for what he's doing, but also the, uh, knowledge that it is the toughest decision that he's ever made on that recommendation. And, uh, you know, this is, again, one of the toughest decisions I have to make. And, and I applaud both, uh, Director Douglas and Director Ms. Skater Jones for their commentary. Absolutely hits everyone in the gut, many great points, without a doubt. So I, I appreciate the thoughtfulness of that. Uh, when it comes to looking at this, I, I've looked at, again, I've shared my concerns on how things are being measured. We really don't know from the beginning if those things are accurate or not, and you've admitted them, but we don't know. Uh, we, uh, don't have a, a very solid framework of making that next decision. And I would have hoped that if we had looked at it and said, if we want to extend it to the fourteenth, what will be that decision point, uh, with some, uh, specific framework? And you have a valid, very valid point. The numbers could change, but if we're looking at certain numbers, I'm looking at a framework that says, how do I, uh, how do I make that decision? And I, I don't know that, uh, that was clearly articulated, uh, other than we don't know and we will, you know, make that decision at the time. So, you know, I, 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 I do struggle with this. The kids want to be in school. The parents want kids to be in school. I can read the emails from the educators who have finally started to step up, uh, and, and ask that they go back to class with their students and do it now. Some have asked for extra time. Parents have asked for extra time. That's fine. They support that. But now we're starting to see that parents are saying, for my eighth, uh, grader, my fourth grader, my first grader, for my family, the best thing to do is to be back in school. And there's other opinions, and, and others have been shared. So it's on both sides of the coin that we're getting feedback, not just one. Uh, and, and it is starting to, to ramp up. And, and what Director Simons had, had stated, we, we have a lot of reasons. I don't know if it's reasons. We, we had a lot of things that said, well, we're not ready, we're not ready, we're not ready. But how are you going to get ready for hybrid if you're teaching in distance? Uh, uh, um, I think that question was asked multiple times, and I'm struggling with that, that how does going into distance and then trying to come back out? And if we make a decision on September twenty-ninth, is two weeks enough time to do that? You know, to, to say, you know, we're going to come back. And, 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 and I'll let you answer that question if that's something you want to address, but that's giving the system then two weeks to pivot. And is that enough time to pivot? And, and the two weeks in the classroom? What did that? Uh, I'm, I'm trying to, just, I'm trying to understand how that, what that gained us in that period of time to help with hybrid. So... Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm stuck on what you're recommending. And, uh, I know you've spent a lot of time and effort in, in, in thinking through that. Uh, but, uh, I'm also looking at, uh, what our parents have asked for and what others and our teachers are asking for. And, and our, our own people have said they can get it done. Uh, we, we can do things. And, you know, uh, safety is of utmost concern. And, and let's not, you know, forget that. And if the numbers right now are meaningless because we don't know how their baseline, we don't know how they're tracked, we don't know anything about them, they could be apples and rotten apples and rot, rot, rotten oranges, you know, for all that we know. I would like to see more information, uh, on that. No matter which way this goes tonight, we have to have better baseline information on which to make decisions. So with that, uh, is there any other, uh, um-
Yes.
Is there?
I have a question.
Is there any other?
Can I ask a question?
Question.
Um, this is probably a very stupid question. And, you know, I know this is a working agenda. Um, I know we're in the middle of attacking, discussing a motion, but I, I was under, understanding under the governor's, um, direction and that, I mean, it's not, the scoreboard doesn't need to take a vote. It's really under the discretion of our superintendent. So do we even have to take a vote tonight?
So...
I'm just asking counsel, the counsel.
You're asking counsel?
Tim.
We have a motion.
I'm just asking a question, please. Thank you.
Tim?
Mr. Chair, I mean, may I respond?
Yeah, oh, yeah, no, look at it, sorry, yeah.
Um, I, I think that, I'm, I'm not sure if the question is related to whether the governor's order requires, um, board action or superintendent, um-
I know it doesn't require board action.
That's right, but there, there is a motion. I mean, the, the board also has presented the issue. I mean, the board would have the ability to, to put forward this motion that it has tonight. I mean, there's nothing that speaks to it in the governor's order one way or another, right? I guess that's the best way I can address that.
So how do you, so is, could you prefer the motion to, to really table this discussion and, and to, um, allow the superintendent to make his recommendation? Because you don't need a board vote.
Yeah, he already made his recommendation.
Um, okay, so can, I understand that, but can I make a motion that we don't, as a board, need to vote because he's already made that recommendation? A lot of districts have also provided their school board, um, their superintendent, you know, the ability to make these decisions because it really isn't a school board. I mean, it's, that's not part of the governor's orders.
You can make a motion to table it, and we can vote on that motion.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to ta, it's not to, it's to, it's to table the board to vote and allow our superintendent to, um, move forward with his recommendation because you don't, you don't need a board, you don't need a board vote.
Whether you need a board vote or not, our superintendent made a recommendation to the board to take a vote.
And districts have handled this differently.
Yeah, so I'm just, I'm saying, if it fails, it fails, but I feel that's my motion moving forward.
So you've made a motion to, to table this vote?
The board decision and allow, go back to what the governor's order is, I'm really set, and to let the superintendent, um, make the recommendation. Without a board approval.
That's not how that would play out, actually. We would not approve a recommendation, and then we would have made no change, so the plans would remain as they were. Then we would have to have, uh, a resolution and approval to decide to provide that full authority to the superintendent to not consult the board on return to school plans. Every district has handled that differently. Our district has previously before now-
I just have a really big concern that we're not listening to our families and our teachers, and so I just, this is really a matter of life and death as we move forward, so I just take it very seriously. So I'm just look exhausting my, uh, to understand what the options are on the table.
So again, I'm, I'm not sure if I know what the specific question is. If it, the, the main motion right now is the second part of the superintendent's recommendation. The options with respect to the, the first, the first part of the divided motion passed. The second, uh, part and the second, the second recommendation, um, is, uh, subject to, uh, I, I guess potentially a motion to amend. It could be subject to a motion table has been suggested. It, it wouldn't be, uh, subject to a, an entirely different motion. There would have to be a subsidiary motion, as, as I just indicated. So it, it it would not be in order to bring a, a completely different, um, motion in its own right, if that makes sense.
It does make sense. So you're, I'm just looking at, at any possibility. I feel so strongly, I guess, about this, and I'm really, really concerned for our students. I think that, you know, even, you know, as Director Douglas had stated, possibly even another week, you know, for like, it's two weeks, but then that's really only a couple, it's only two more weeks, um, to go hybrid again, and I just, um, I'm surprised because I feel like our board, uh, in general, has always kind of felt, um, we've been through a lot of this, you know, the last month or so, or longer than that, um, six months, talking about this, and, um, I just feel like our leadership is saying that there's not the readiness. I, I, I guess, I'm putting myself out there because I'm not really sure of, kind of, you know, what the next move is, and maybe we just move forward and we just take the vote, um, but I just, uh, wanted to look at, you know, um, if we keep going back to what the governor says, you know, because this is what, that's what I've heard a lot. Technically, the governor says it's not the school board that makes this decision, so, um, I will... There's nowhere in the, the, it says anything about the school board, so it says the superintendent. So, I mean, I, I can let it rest, but I just, um, I guess I was just trying to figure out if there is a, a different path, but it doesn't sound like there is, so we can move forward.
Lieutenant Magentaire, you have a comment?
Yeah, I appreciate the conversation, and maybe I can help clarify a bit, you know. I didn't pursue bringing a resolution forward to the board because I really wanted to, my hope was and my intention was bringing forward a recommendation that represented the will of our staff, uh, all our health professionals and, and, uh, including building and, uh, district-level principals that we could get behind. And I really believe the power in that is the board and all of us being on the same page. So that was a risk, I suppose that was taken by going that route instead of asking the board to give the superintendent authority to make those decisions during the year. I, I think any decision that affects a whole district across the district is something the board should weigh in on. And that's not true in other, other districts. I've, other districts have given a resolution, and the superintendents have the authority to move in and out of models as they see fit. And, and we might be opposed with that depending on what happens, but I guess I was, um, my hope was bringing something forward with the support it had that would, uh, hopefully land in, in some, uh, overall, you know, common ground. But i- if the board chooses to go another direction, we will follow that order. That is, my job is to bring you a recommendation, your job is to vote, and then it's my job to carry it out with our, with our team and with our staff. And we've, we've had that conversation before, too. Don't know if that helps, but that was an intentional on my part to bring it to the board because I think transparency helps when all of you can have a chance to, uh, direct us in our work.
I have an additional discussion point. Um, so I'd echo Director Douglas' statement that this is in no way a lack of confidence or, uh, in our superintendent. I, I've said that this, that this decision is about the, um, amount of time. So, um, certainly if we would meet again and there was a recommendation for more time that was before October, I think we still have courses of action that we can take. So again, we had the recommendation to wait until October. I don't agree with the October timeline. I don't think that's what our, um, as representing, um, the district and exercising my function of board governance and oversight, um, that's, that's where we have, so, for me, that's where I have the, the question. So it's not that I don't think we need more time and so forth, but the questioning, the line of questioning I asked tonight could not get, um, my support for that degree of delay.
Can I address, um, some questions that I heard pop up during this discussion? So one of the things we know is that right now all of our students are probably in trauma brain from all the stuff that's been going on in 2020. Six weeks, which is what, um, we're talking about, October nineteenth, is developmentally the amount of time that teachers use to get students, um, acclimated to, uh, routines of, the routine of class, um, the rules, the relationship building, um, all of that piece. So I am saying that going until October nineteenth will help us get ready for hybrid because we will have all those pieces down, doing that in one modality rather than trying to, um, bounce back and forth between, um, two modalities. The other thing is if we have to, um, because um, the, the health experts, from my understanding, from, uh, the county and the state are concerned that, um, the trend is up even though we had a small dip, and that we may very well have to do this, um, distance learning plus in a couple of weeks. And so if we're worried about our students, which, believe me, I've been a teacher for thirty years. I worry about my students. I haven't slept since July thirtieth. Then we want as much consistency for them as possible in being in class one day and out of class another day, and being in childcare one day, having to get to know those people, and then- and then in class with the teachers and having to learn to make sure that you're not touching anyone when kids need to touch each other, high school kids need, they accidentally bump into each other in the halls to get that kind of experience. It's this six weeks would immensely help students and teachers. Concerns about families who are struggling and may not have someone at home for their kids or that there may be abuse or neglect, those kinds of things. Our kids have to deal with that all the time. The kids I work with have to deal with that. The relationships that I built with my families during distance learning allowed me to spend a little more time, even though I was working 14 hours a day, to make sure that each of those students got what they needed. And so with the supports and our fabulous staff, we can make sure that our kids are getting what they need. And schools are meant to teach, we're meant to teach. And we have become social workers and nurses and teachers and mental health professionals. Not licensed, of course, but, you know, we have to figure out some of those things. And to put that on, um, I don't know, I don't know what to say, I just the reason I voted for hybrid the first time is because I was worried about kids being home and having, having the exposure in their communities and that maybe school would be a safe place if we could have the safety protocols. And I no longer believe that because I think hybrid would be way more difficult for students to figure out in the very beginning of the year and too much transitioning time. I just don't know what else to say.
Directors, any other comments? With that, we will move to a vote, all in favor of supporting the recommendation to move the start in distance learning mode until October 14th. Please, in support, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Motion fails, three to two. As we get more information in, and we've all been seeking more information, I would not be opposed to having an emergency meeting or anything else where you can bring us updated numbers, since that was the gist of what we're looking at, to identify, are things going in the wrong direction or are they improving?
So like I said, each, every Thursday is when we get those, so if you're willing. I'll, I'll offer two other options, so you get, you can choose to start in hybrid then on the 14th, since you agreed to the 14th. Or you can more closely align to the recommendation of the governor's model, which would be starting elementary and starting secondary in distance. But again, that was not the wishes of our leaders and teachers in this district. So I don't know, I'm happy to call a special meeting on Friday, for example, of one more data point. I don't know if it'll clarify anything. Maybe it will. Even if it was one more downward trend, it's still only two data points. And again, it's against the guidance of the county, but I can bring that back to you if that is your wish.
Yeah, and, and if it goes the opposite direction, and if things start to change across the district. But I would like to see, you know, we are only two days away from getting substantial, you know, information. And I wish I thought of that sooner to say, why, why didn't we make this on a, on a Monday? Or on, on Thursday when we have the, when we have the fresh information, not, information, it's five days.
I guess, I felt as superintendent I had enough, so.
Yeah, okay, no, that's fair.
I guess I'll just say that time is of the essence here. Every day that goes by is one less day for us to get everything in place. And if you are asking us to put hybrid in on the 14th, that's a big ask. And some kind of staggered models, what it's going to take.
Yes, Director Douglas?
I alluded to this before, but I would support, and I think that we should consider as a board and as a district, moving our start date out further than the 14th by another week and beginning in the hybrid model at that time. If the numbers continue to indicate that that be the best case scenario.
Is it, is that a?
That's my suggestion. Would you like me to make a motion?
Yeah, you.
I don't think we can.
Can I? I don't know, because we just made a motion that we would start, move it by, to the 14th. So I didn't know if I could do that.
I, uh,
Or move it to the 21st.
Can we add new motions on the agenda at this point, Tim?
Yeah.
Or would it be an amending of the previous motion that we already voted on?
The, the agenda obviously is subject, the, the agenda was approved at the outset. I know that we have had other circumstances where we, I, I suppose, voted on and entertained motions during the course of the meeting. I'm not sure that there's anything strictly prohibits it, so.
I guess I would prefer give me the chance at least to talk to our staff and come back with the, the next best option instead of deciding tonight.
Agreed.
Okay.
Because I would like the chance to work with our teachers and our administrators and try to get some additional guidance from the state and county. I don't know if it'll change anything, but at least would be a little more information for you. Potentially by the end of the week. But we're, we're up against time, you know.
And I'd add, well, we, I'll talk one on one.
Okay.
I would look forward to another option for us to be able to vote on, if there's one identified. So again, if there's another option being brought forward that wasn't the recommendation tonight, that there's a secondary recommendation, I'd be open to meeting, to review and to take action on.
With all due respect, this is a recommendation brought before by our leadership, so I just, anyways, I'm, I'm, I'm ready to join this meeting. Well, we still have another action.
Yeah, one more action item. Final action item is a recommendation to accept gifts to the district totaling $40,929.70. Is there a motion to accept the gifts to the district totaling $40,929.70?
So moved.
Uh, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion? And I want to say thank you for everyone, the PTOs, the companies and everyone else who have donated this money very graciously to support our students. All in favor of accepting the gifts to the district, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, five, nothing. Adjournment, our final adjournment, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
All in favor, motion and seconded, all in favor of adjournings, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes, we are adjourned at 10:55 PM. Thank you, everybody.